Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the August 25th, 2020 regular school board meeting to order. The first item on our agenda today is to accept the agenda. Madam Superintendent, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Thank you. We do have revisions. I'm sorry, let me take this now. Item C3, approval of the June 16th, 2020 work session minutes update item. Item C26, 2020, 2021 dual enrollment Pope State move item to the regular agenda. Item number 33. That is all the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda for August 25th, 2020 with the noted revisions as described. Do I have a motion and a second? Hands up or say something. Okay, Mr. Wilson made the motion. Ms. Miller seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Now I would like to ask Board Member Lisa Miller to give our invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for the day you've given us. Please watch over the teachers and the students as they return to the schools. We understand that everything is in your plan. Thank you for the staff that is working overtime to do what's necessary for all kids. Be with us during the transitional time during our district during COVID and other crises. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet together today. Amen.
And now I would like to ask Sarah Beth Reynolds to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and you all may be seated. The next item is public comments on agenda items. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding an item on the regular agenda today?
Yes, ma'am, there are two.
If so, go ahead and read their name and address and comments into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first comment comes from Deborah Hecht in Winter Haven, Florida. Whereas pursuant to Section 1001.42 Florida statutes, the school board is responsible for, among other things, providing for the proper attention to health, safety, and other matters relating to the welfare of students. And whereas pursuant to Section 1001.43 Florida statutes, the school board has authority to adopt programs and policies to ensure the safety and welfare of individuals, the student body, and school personnel, which programs and policies may prohibit activities that could threaten the operation of the school or the safety and welfare of the student body or school personnel. And our schools are currently not safe. The positivity rate in Polk County among students less than 18 years old is 16.5% according to the DOH. Therefore, many students who are asymptomatic are walking in our schools infecting other students and adults. Students were not social distancing today on the first day. Masks were being worn incorrectly. Please reassess the decision to teach face to face. Safety needs, safety needs to be at the top of the list as is spelled out in this resolution. It is the job of the school board to be transparent and use science to make these very critical decisions. As we all know, the governor does not regard lives and his order is a political move to move along Florida's economy. Thank you for your time. Our second comment comes from Stephanie Yocum, President, Polk Education Association. Good evening, Board members. My comment tonight addresses the COVID-19 update from the August 11th special work session. Florida's educators and communities experienced a momentous win in the return of local control to school boards and districts with Leon County Circuit Judge Charles Dodson granting the Florida Education Association's motion for a temporary injunction against Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran's executive order that required all of Florida's school districts to reopen brick and mortar schools in August. The FEA lawsuit is not about physically closing schools or trying to restrict choice for any stakeholder. On the contrary, this necessary emergency injunction returns control back to you, our elected school board and our superintendent, to make the best decisions for Polk County without threat of withheld funding and bully tactics from an unelected DOE bureaucrat and a misguided governor who knows very little about the needs of individual communities. Hillsboro School Board experienced the DOE overreach firsthand when they decided with local healthcare providers to move instruction online for the first four weeks of school. And they were quickly threatened that a large amount of FTE would be withheld if they proceeded with exclusively online instruction. In the minutes from the special work session COVID-19 update, board members expressed concern about our district's reopening plans regarding issues from class sizes, more creative ways to stagger start, stagger start our reopen, ADA requests being denied, and the appeals process for denial, why staff were not being given their return to work preference, and much more. Now that we are not beholden to DOE interference, Polk should be looking at creative ways to accommodate everyone who wanted a virtual work assignment. We have teachers, instructional service providers, and support staff who are taking a leave of absence, retiring early, and even resigning their position because they have been denied an ADA accommodation and/or are scared to come back to work in a physical capacity, with many of these people now having to choose between their actual lives or a loved one's life in their livelihood. There are currently 118 instructional, 77 paraeducator, and seven secretarial clerical positions posted on the district website. And we cannot afford to continue to lose people because our district refuses to troubleshoot and come up with creative solutions to keep these valuable staff members working and serving our students and schools in a capacity that meets their needs as well. We cannot put students first when we continually put staff's needs last. Thank you, Stephanie Yocum. And that concludes our comments.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Warbington. All right, Board members, next, we now need to approve six sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the June 16th, 2020 work session. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the June 16th, 2020 work session meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? By hands, Ms. Miller made the motion, Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The second set of minutes is for the July 28th, 2020 school board meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 28th, 2020 school board meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion made by Ms. Reynolds, seconded by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. The third set of minutes is for the July 28th, 2020 work session meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the July 28th, 2020 work session meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? I have a motion with Ms. Fields and a second with Ms. Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The fourth set of minutes is for the August 11th, 2020 special work session meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the August 11th, 2020 special work session meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Ms. Reynolds and a second by Ms. Fields. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hands raised. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the fifth set of minutes, which is for the January 21, 2020 special work session meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the January 21, 2020 special work session meeting minutes as printed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to call for a motion and a second. Ms. Reynolds made the motion, Ms. Field seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hands raised. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The sixth set of minutes is for the October 8th, 2019 work session meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the October 8th, 2019 work session meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Board members. The next item on our agenda is our new administrator announcements. Mrs. Byrd, would you please introduce our new administrators today?
Thank you, and I am so honored to do so. First, I'd like to introduce and welcome, even though she's not here, welcome Angela Clark as Principal of Ridge Community High. Mrs. Clark previously served as the Assistant Principal at Ridge Community High since October 2014. She attended Ball State University earning her Bachelor's in Science, and, excuse me, Bachelor's in Social Studies Education. Ms. Clark went on to earn her Master's in Educational Leadership at American College of Education. Congratulations, Ms. Clark. Next, I would like to recommend the appointment of Adrian Anthony as the Principal of Kathleen Elementary School. Mr. Anthony served as the principal in Pasco County since, Pasco County School District since July of 2019. He attended Florida A&amp;M University earning his Master's of Business Administration. He went on to earn his Specialist in Educational Leadership at National Lewis University. And last but not least, I would like to recommend the appointment of Jennifer Sasser as Assistant Principal, Central Florida Aerospace Academy Kathleen High School. Ms. Sasser has been serving as Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle since August 2018. She attended University of South Florida earning her Bachelor's Degree in English Education. Ms. Sasser went on to earn her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership at Southeastern University. All of these administrators are currently on board and doing a fantastic job, and I say welcome to each of them. And that concludes our new administrative announcement for today.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Superintendent Byrd. The next item we have is the approval of our consent agenda for August 25th, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the August 25th, 2020 consent agenda as printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Mr. Wilson made the motion, Ms. Field seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Board members, next we come to our regular agenda. Under Business Services Grant Applications, we have item number 28, CARES Act Governor's Emergency Education Relief Summer Recovery Program in the amount of $2,832,322. The GEAR funds, the GEAR, G-E-E-R, stands for the Governor's Emergency Education Relief, under the CARES Act, are provided to local educational agencies, LEAs, to address the impact that the novel coronavirus disease 219, commonly called COVID-19, has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary students in Florida. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the CARES Act GEAR grant application for $2,832,322 to the Florida Department of Education. The grant period is June 1, 2020 to October 31, 2020. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, Mr. Wilson seconded. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Miller.
Okay, are we there? I pulled this off the consent agenda because I wanted someone to give the public a little bit of an explanation. If you pull up the agenda and read these items, it shows what went to personnel and supplies, and it shows the allocation to private and charter. Is there anyone in the room that can give a little background on this? Because this is, this is used, says it will be used to provide instructional support to students who have experienced academic hardships associated with the instructional disruptions of COVID-19 for our at-risk population. I just wanted to give a little bit of background. Is there a staff member available?
Sure. Mr. Hill or Superintendent Byrd?
Mr. Perron and.
Is he in the room?
Is he there? I'm looking for district staff. Is he not in there?
Hello. That was summer school money, third grade mainly.
It was used during this past summer?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't, okay, I didn't know if you wanted to give further explanation. We're approving the $2 million, but thank you for that information.
Well, it goes to October.
Right.
So we'll use some for, is it weekends and?
Is it the tutoring programs?
Some of it, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Perron. I kind of wanted him to weigh in, but if you remember, this money was extended and what happened was because of the summer programs and extension of the grant, now that schools can go in, and Ms. Perron, I don't know if you want to go any deeper in that, and utilize that money for after-school programs on Saturdays, and the principals can use it during the week as well. So that's what we're looking at instead of having to all use it during the summer. But I didn't know, Ms. Perron, if you want to talk anymore about it because I know.
No, that's about it. We stretched it out to, they gave us more time through, I think, the end of October, so we're going to use it differently than trying to spend it all the summer.
And do we target the turnaround schools or all at-risk kids? Who's available to take advantage of that?
I want to, Ms. Townley's here. Hold on one second.
Right, a lot of that we're using in the schools. And then I know Ms. Townley had the original list because we started with this money during the summer. And what we're doing is make it available. Quite naturally, we're looking at our at-risk, at-risk schools and our at-risk students, and we're targeting them. And so, Ms. Townley, I know you have that list, and if you wanted to add anything additional to it.
That's correct, Mrs. Byrd. We targeted our students that were in third grade that when they took their STAR assessment in December, they had scored below the 50th percentile. So that was students that were potentially on track to attend our normal third-grade summer reading camp, but in, without having the FSA, we used the metric from December, which is what we had on hand. So any of those students in our, and we mainly targeted our elementary schools that have previously earned a school grade of a D.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Townsend?
So, so, so this is partially reimbursement then? Is that, so it's like, it's money we've already spent that we have on, that we're, that we're getting paid back for? Is that how that works?
Some of it was spent to pay our teacher salaries for the teachers that taught the virtual summer learning program. And then, as Mr. Perron said, the state did extend it through October 31st. And so, we will be using those funds for tutoring, whether it be virtually or in person, depending on the students' choices in those schools that were selected to deliver the instruction in summer as well.
So, so this is a, the, it's a grant application, but do we, we already have the money? Or are we, I guess I'm more interested in what the status of the money is. Is it on hand?
The money was tied to meeting the assurances spelled out for the targeted students. And so, we, once we were able to submit that plan to meet those assurances in the tutoring for students that were in need, then we were able to receive the money.
So, so, Mr. Townsend, the allocation is there?
So, so, Mr. Townsend, the allocation is there. It's just that we haven't expended it all yet, because we stretched it out, because we had, all those kids didn't get service, and that they gave us an, an extension. They gave all the counties, not just Polk, to utilize those funds up into October.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? There being no further discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next, under Facilities and Operations, General Items Administration, we have item number twenty-nine, Resolution to Adopt Polk County Multi-Jurisdictional Local Mitigation Strategy Update. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of Resolution twenty-twenty-dash twenty-twenty-one, number six, for the twenty-twenty Polk County Local Mitigation Strategy Update. Do I have a motion and a second?
With approval.
Okay. Mr. Townsend made the motion, and Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Next, we have item thirty, Memorandum of Understanding for Disaster Shelters. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Polk County School Board and the Polk County Board of County Commissioners for Disaster Shelter Relief. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made the motion. I need a second. And Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Next, we have under Facilities and Operations, General Items, Property Management Land, item number thirty-one, McHale Academy Water Utilities Easement. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the McHale Academy Water Utilities Easement with the City of Lakeland. Do I have a motion and a second? Mrs. Fields made the motion. Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have under Learning Support, General Items, item number thirty-two, Autism Spectrum Disorder Add-on Endorsement Program, K through twelve, for two-twenty, two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Autism Spectrum Disorder Add-on Endorsement Program for K through twelve, for two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion, and Mr. Wilson seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we have under Teaching and Learning, General Item Number Thirty-three, the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Dual Enrollment with Polk State, Polk State College. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Articulation Agreement for the twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one school year for dual enrollment with Polk State College. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Fields made the motion. Ms. Reynolds seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be abstaining from voting on this matter due to my employment relationship with Polk State College, and I will work with Ms. Warbington to make sure we get the appropriate paperwork filed with the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, so, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. And Mr. Wilson has abstained. So the motion carries six to zero and one. Nobody's against it, just we have one that has, have abstained. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, it is time for our public hearing. I would like to recess our school board meeting and open up the public hearing. At this time, I would like to call the public hearing for August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty to order. Board members, we have item number thirty-four, Mi Esquela Montessori New Charter Contract. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding item thirty-four for the public hearing today?
No, ma'am, there are not.
Okay, so we shall proceed. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Mi Esquela Montessori Charter School Contract for five years. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Reynolds made the motion. Ms. Miller seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Miller?
Just going to say that I happily approve this contract. There was a lot of work done on it. This is the charter schools we need. We need schools doing things that we don't do, with local control and people on the board that are invested locally in this, this community. So I'm very happy for this school, and I can't wait, and I hope I'm invited to the grand opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. This is precisely what the concept of Charter was always supposed to be. In fact, you know, the word Charter has an enormous range of stuff within it. On one side, you have schools like this, run by Estella Cruz, and then all the other, you know, you have big for-profit chains that just want to eat, eat away at things. It's prob, probably, probably time for us to figure out another word than Charter in some ways, but in, 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 in any event, this is, you know, a, a, a net benefit to the county. I'm, 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 I'm happy that it's being approved.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments are similar to those of my colleagues, but I just want to echo a little bit of what they said. We've commended them before when they came to present to us this year. It's come to us in previous years and was not nearly as clean and nice and financially stable as this year. They've done a ton of work in meeting with our staff, meeting with the community, and making sure that they really do have the best possible plan and that they can have the best impact on those students, and offer something different that we don't offer here in Polk County Public Schools. And so I just want to, again, commend them, and I'll be happily approving this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fortney?
Yes, and I just want to make what they said, but I just hope that the district will support this school, because I think back to another charter school that serves a specific need, that we couldn't find money to even help with their busing, and I don't want that to become an issue for the charter schools that actually do the work that, for our kids that we cannot service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Next, we have item thirty-five, the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Code of Student Conduct. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding item thirty-five for the public hearing today?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, we shall proceed. The Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the changes for the Student Code of Conduct for the two thousand and twenty dash two thousand and twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion and a second? I have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Ms. Fields. Is there any discussion? Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. We had a lengthy discussion about this at our last meeting. I will not be supporting this tonight, mainly for the reason that I don't believe in putting solutions to short-term problems into our policy. And I think if you look back over the past several decades, that when we start to look at the red tape that we're jumping through at the local levels, but also at the state level, a lot of it is in policy that was created to be a solution for one thing and ended up causing more problems down the line. Typically, policies don't just go back and get repealed, they just get added to and changed to, to fit the needs. So it does conserve me, deep, concern me deeply to put into policy a solution for a short-term pop, problem. I wish we could do this during, with an emergency resolution instead of putting it into our formal policy, and so I will not be supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fortney?
Well, it is the only barrier we have in these special times that, and even that is not guaranteed a hundred percent like nothing else in life, but I will say that the enforcement piece, after the second day, my phone has blown up, you know, ten times to tell a child to put the mask on correctly, is not acceptable and adds undue stress to our staff, and I, I sure hope the district backs him up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and put your hands up. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Okay. The motion carries six to one. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting. The next item tonight is our superintendent's report. Mrs. Byrd, do you have an update for us today?
I do. Thank you. And first of all, I want to say welcome back to all of our students, teachers, staff, and in our parents that we met along the way. We want, we want to welcome each of you back to another school year. And, Ms. Fortney, I, I do want to address the mask issue. As we were out and about, I can tell you that the masks were being worn by all of our students. I can also tell you that when two students did not comply, they were sent home and their parents did pick them up. So that is occurring across the district with the administrators, where they're wearing the mask, and we're seeing that. And a lot of times, we're not even having to ask them to wear the mask. When you go to high schools and the students are actually having the mask on, and you're really not having to do a lot to ask them, they're wearing their mask. I want to thank the teachers that were on-site and the teachers that are teaching e-learning, because you can see them, they're in there, they're at work, the students are engaged. The parents have said so many times, thank you all for allowing our students to come back, and we're hearing from them via emails as well. So today was day two, and we'll be back out in the buildings for the next several days, this week and next week, ensuring that we get everybody out there. And I want to welcome everybody back, because it is a very different year, but you know, at some point, we all got to come together and do what's right and work for the good of our students. Many of our students are struggling. Many of them came back in. We started off our year with rituals, routines, and remediation, because we know when they left, they left us at a point that we had to do remediation. So I want to say welcome back to everyone. Again, the next work session and board meeting will be held on September the eighth, two thousand and twenty. Work session will begin at twelve-thirty PM, and the board meeting will begin at five PM. And they will both take place at Jim Miles Development Center on, at fifty, at fifty-two oh four, Highway ninety-eight South in Lakeland, that's across from the Publix. So again, welcome back to everyone, and thank you all for the hard work you've done in these, these two days, and we'll be back out, seeing each and every one of you, and again, thank you. This concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd, and I just wanted to make a note, the September eighth work session and board meeting is being scheduled at Jim Miles in order for that to be an in-person meeting. I don't know how many of you have noticed, but most of our board members have been at these work sessions and board meetings in person. There are several who have not, but starting on September the eighth, we're hoping to get back to some sense of normalcy, and we'll be having those meetings going forward at Jim Miles, so that we can be appropriately socially distanced. So, thank you for that. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our attorney's report. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. During the pendency of the public health emergency, I've been asked to bring back to the school board for, for renewal at each meeting, Resolution twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty dash twelve, a resolution of the school board of Polk County, Florida, regarding the temporary suspension of school board policies during certain emergencies impacting the health, safety, and well-being of students, employees, volunteers, and the community. So, for your approval.
Thank you. So we have item number thirty-seven, Extension of School Board Resolution, twenty-nineteen, two thousand and twenty, number twelve. So the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the extension of the school board resolution, twenty-nineteen, two thousand and twenty, number twelve. Do I have a motion and a second? Mr. Townsend, motion, second? Do I have a second? Ms. Miller? Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and how many, all those opposed, like sign? So I have one, two, three. So the motion carries four to three. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, we come on our agenda to our auditor's report. However, I do not believe that we have an auditor's report today. So now, I'd like to start with our board member reports, and we'll start with Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, I guess I'm unmuted. Okay, I, I have a quick question about the two, two K aces, the two COVID K aces that have been reported. Like, there are, what are the circumstances under which these, these people are, I mean, I don't have to say who they are, but was this a case of someone coming into the school with symptoms and being sent home? What, what is, can we, can we get a little bit of under, understanding of what this is and what prompted the testing?
Sure. I can weigh in, and I know Mr. Hill, who's really been the lead on these cases with this. These were not cases that were in the school. The parents alerted us that they had this cases in their home over the weekend, and they had already had a test that came in since they, we started school. That's what the cases were, so therefore, we, we went ahead and followed procedures with the Department of Health under their guidance. Mr. Hill is the lead on this with Audrey in the Department of Health, so I don't know, Mr. Hill, if you want to weigh in anymore on that, to let them know any additional information.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd. Mr. Townsend, we, we did receive the notification, and the good news is that we have worked seamlessly with Department of Health and their lead investigator, they're, the one who oversees investigation, and Mr. Scott Shablam. And in addition, our team at Mark Wilcox has been working with us, and we had the protocols and the procedures in place. That's the great news, and then it was a matter of applying those and working through it and learning all the little nuances that go with it. So we were diligently, our principal and, and our regional assistant superintendent have worked through all the logistics of it and all the details, the finer details, and we were able to, I'd say, contend with it very quickly, decisively, and, and put our plans in action. So that's the good news in those situations so far.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little unclear what it is. So, so we had, were these kids actually in the schools at some point? So they, 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 they came into the school on Monday or Tuesday?
So what, what occurred is you have a, a student that was in school, and then we were contacted by a parent notifying us that the child was positive for COVID. And so at that point, then we did contact tracing and implemented all of our procedures. And so that's, that's what's occurred.
And the, and the parent contact contacted because, because the test had come, had come in over the weekend? Okay.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Is that, is that the case on both? Like, like there, there's one at Summerlin and, and at Boone? Is that, is that?
So, so at the case at Summerlin, the, the, the student actually notified us, yes.
Notified that?
The, 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 the staff, that he had a- The staff, that he had a positive case, that the student had a positive case.
Mr. Townsend, what you're asking is, is it that we had them, I think you're asking, did we send them to get testing? They had already had a test underway, and they came and notified us that they had got the results. So they probably could have been tested over the weekend, and they got the results since they have been in school either Monday or Tuesday.
So, so, so we could have had two kids, I mean, we had two kids who were positive, who knew they had tests out, who were getting tests taken, and both came into school?
So, go ahead, Ms. Byrd.
That is correct. And if you, when I did my press conference, I think Monday, I did ask the parents, we have to be very honest, and I'll say that again, parents need to be very honest and tell us if they know they have a case in their home and they had a test, and then they need to let us know, and then we'll advise them not to send that child to school. It's all about them being honest with us and giving us the best information they have. And so we, and we'll continue to make sure we push that message forward, that we need them to tell us that they have an active case in their home, and they've had a test, and we would then instruct them through the Department of Health to keep that child home, not send them to school. The child did not have any symptoms.
In neither case?
Neither case from what we heard, no.
The student, child, correct.
Okay. Okay, so just picking up on that, I realized the lawsuit doesn't really immediately change anything because of the appeal and all of that, but should, should that reasoning hold? You know, I think Ms. Yocum's point about there being no coercion reason to have someone not, not, not be granted their preference, and a assignment is, is an important one. You know, if we're lucky, there will be no more distinction between online FTE and not. And as things play out, or they don't, you know, we'll, we'll see how things go, I hope that we will use this operational flexibility that may be coming our way to, to be pretty smart and decisive. So I just want to put that on the, on the, on the record. And then an entirely unrelated, well, not entirely unrelated, I got a note from a Roosevelt parent that they are excluded from the typical high school lunch, maybe, you know, sort of a small, small thing in, in the grand scheme of things, but is there a reason for that? You know, I know they are a high school to some, some degree, and is there something we can do to build them into the overall lunch setup? You know, I know that's, that's a, again, a kind of a different degree, but you know, all the kids are going back under interesting circumstance answers, and I'm sure that having a better lunch would be one that is, that would make the Roosevelt experience better. So with that, I'll, I'll be, I'll be done.
Okay, and I'm not clear on the question about Roosevelt. So do you have some information you can send me?
I do, yeah.
If you're discussing, thank you, if you'll please forward it to us, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All right, next we move to Ms. Fortney.
I, this is actually a follow-up to my questions that were kind of left unanswered at the last work session when we had our medical professionals there. The slides are pretty well self-explanatory. Basically, data, as we all know, can be skewed by the formula that's used by the Florida Department of Health and the CDC guidelines. Obviously, data is being manipulated to show the lower positivity rate by the state. Just less than 10% difference if you look at the very bottom of the first slide here. If you look at the second slide, it shows actually a positivity difference of 11%. I just want people to see how real data works so we can make smarter decisions and trust the leaders are doing what is best for our community overall. I'm still deeply concerned about our HVAC system circulating any kind of fresh air and the decisions made that are not using available particle physics technology as studies indicate. While I don't expect perfection, apparently, Mrs. Byrd and I talked to different people throughout the district, but I have been bombarded with parents, staff, actual former students showing their concern. It is mind-boggling to me the number of messages I have received. And I would hope that with this injunction, we can be a little bit more flexible and share teachers across our schools, use teachers that need virtual help and blended learning pairs in a different way, temporarily move staff to accommodate those needs. I just don't see it happening. I see parents reaching out. They are very frustrated. Some even being told, if you don't like it, find another school. Those were the exact quotes that I got sent on a screenshot. You know, I had former parents or students that are now parents reach out, our buses are, kids standing in the aisles, teachers, class sizes are up because of all the switching back and forth. That's where we need our flexibility. I don't know what else to say, except I think we can do better, but we need to use the real science, not politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had the pleasure of spending the past couple days at Winter Haven High School helping out, and it has been a dream. I really was a little bit worried going back to a high school, mainly because most of them are the same size as me, some of them, many of them are bigger than I am, and I look about their age normally. So, but they were a dream to have lunch, just social distancing. There was never a question about which way they needed to be facing. It was a little bit shocking, but they are rocking it. And talking to a couple teachers, their medical academy teacher at lunch yesterday, I asked her how it was going, and she was like, you know, my, my kids are never this quiet. They've been so respectful, they want to be here, and they're excited to be back and willing to do whatever it takes to, to be able to stay back in school so that we don't shut down again. And so I just want to say thank you to our students for realizing that going to school is, is a right, but it's also a privilege, and the fact that they're going above and beyond to make sure that they're, they're following the, the rules of the new norms so that we can keep our schools open. Additionally, I'd like just to say thank you to our staff. The last few weeks have been pretty crazy, especially up in the offices with guidance counselors and scheduling and, and rescheduling and then rescheduling again when they change from e-learning or back to traditional, but they have all taken it every punch as it came and never complained and just kept pushing forward for the students. And finally, I want to thank our school secretaries because I don't think that anyone truly realizes how chaotic it is in the front office the first week of school. The phones, I don't think, have stopped ringing at any of our schools. I know at Winter Haven, they have four people in the front office answering phones, and they just cannot get through them quick enough. So parents, please be patient as you're calling. I promise they're all up there answering them as quickly as they can, but we, we have a lot of great things happening in our schools. So just thank you to all of our staff who's making it happen.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. That was a great report. Next, we have Ms. Fields.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, and thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for the uplifting report. Have an opportunity to see firsthand the online learning. We have a hub at Girls Inc., and yesterday was a bit challenging because of the internet connection and a lot of crashing going on. Today was much better, but I would have to agree with Ms. Reynolds. The girls are very excited about being back in a structured environment, even though it's online, and I want to commend the teachers and everybody else that's involved in making sure that everything is up on, on the school board platform. And I want to thank the parents, all the parents, because e-learning is not as easy as we might think it is. I just really discovered that the last few days firsthand. So I want to commend them, and I want to thank everybody for their hard work and whatever their respective role is, because everybody's position, everybody's job is important, and we're excited about what the school year will, will be, and we know that everybody is going to continue to do ultimately what's best for our students. So again, thanks to everybody for their hard work. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I've been very vocal about not requiring teachers, the teachers who chose the virtual option, not requiring them to come back face-to-face and brick and mortar if they chose not to. And, you know, I think what has happened as a result of COVID-19, it is completely reinforced and made quite clear to me that the challenges education faces are both structural and they're systemic. They're structural in the sense that we, we have laws that come down from the federal government, from the state, we have rules from the DOE that tie our hands and limit our creativity, they limit our flexibility. But we have exacerbated that through our systemic approach to, to the way we administer the school district. And by that, I mean, and it's not, this is not an indictment of the current, our current administration, but any stretch of the imagination, this is baked in the cake for many, many years. It's a product of focusing first on laws and rules and then carrying out the business of the district, and I think we have that backwards. I think we have to find a way to focus on being flexible, flexible and being creative for the district, and then secondarily, meeting the laws and rules of the state of Florida and the DOE. I think that's, it's a perspective. And, you know, one of the things I've seen through my research is that increasingly, schools are using chief operating officers, because we're, we're absolutely blessed with incredible talented educators, but I think we lack that, that person in the organization that has those systemic skillsets to help us bring about that change. And it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take an awful long time to bring about because it's, you know, it's turning a big, big ship, and that doesn't happen overnight. But I think we need to start focusing on that. How do we, how do we carry out the business of the school district with maximum flexibility, maximum creativity, and then focus on the laws and rules secondarily? Not that we shouldn't be following them, we should. It's, again, it's, it's an approach, it's a perspective, because once you focus on the laws and rules first, you, you limit your ability to, to be creative and flexible. So, you know, that's going to be something that I will be focused on moving forward. But in the meantime, if we do get, I'm going to make the same appeal, if we do get some relief from the state, I'm hoping we can find a way to be creative, to be flexible, in allowing those folks who, who aren't comfortable yet coming back to teach virtually. So that's going to be my, my, my appeal to Superintendent Byrd and the staff. And with that, I conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And Superintendent Byrd would like to address Ms. Fortney.
Ms. Fortney, I just wanted to circle back on this. When you were saying the bus, you're getting reports that students were standing in the aisles on the buses. The buses are averaging about 28, which they're not, they're not over 51. And I actually went to the two larger schools that have the most bus routes, which was the high schools, Ridge and Haynes City, to make sure I saw that. And I spoke to the bus drivers personally, and they were telling me that, you know, their buses aren't crowded and everybody's in there. So if you have your bus number, please send it to me, because we pay special attention to our, our buses to make sure, and our drivers are working really, really hard. And I know as I'm speaking to them when I go to school sites, because I usually get on and speak to the drivers, not even just at the schools, even when fueling up, and they're basically telling me what their bus sizes are. So if you're hearing that, please let me know, because there's no students that should be standing in aisle only when unloading and loading, and they're socially distanced. So please send me the bus number or the school, and we'll look into it. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I address that.
Mrs. Byrd, I don't doubt that you don't do that, but as usual, I can't get people to own up with a name publicly because their fear of retribution or their child, whatever. And it wasn't just one parent, and it wasn't just one bus. I am going to tell you that. And to address Mr. Wilson's thing, you know, we have teachers that have had to take FMLA because they can't afford to die while they teach, and it's still happening.
Well, thank you for that, but if you have a bus number, please send it to us so we can look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Mr. Wilson for speaking so eloquently. I don't always do that, and he seemed to get out what I was hoping to say, and it's about being compliance-based. And none of this, none of the critiquing of what's happening in the middle of the pandemic that no one's ever had experienced in a pandemic is personal to anybody that we know is working very hard, but we have issues. The issues, since we didn't have a work session, I think this is where we're getting a little bit more of what we need answers to. I just have a few things. The staff, we've had some great, I've had some great response from new teachers, like going into the classroom during the pandemic as a new teacher. They've had a lot of support from that new teacher initiative that we have, even coming in and just talking teachers down, and it's going to be okay and we're going to help you, which I think is phenomenal. That kind of support, if we can sustain it, will keep, keep them around and they won't leave us. I've had three, one at Winter Haven High School, which is a large school, another one that's starting her career in one of our turnaround elementary schools. And, and so I appreciate people walking into this, into this job in the middle of a pandemic when we're struggling, and we will struggle with our budgets. But the sick staff, the staff that are sick, that I sent an email, but it hasn't, I don't have a response. We have sick staff members, we have people who are ill or have family members with cancer and who are ill, and it's tough because we're compliance-based. If you're an ASC inclusion teacher, there's only one of you in the school, so now you've created a hardship on the school if you're not there. And I get that, I understand operational, but I think if we looked at the approach differently, similar to what Mr. Wilson said, and go backwards into compliance, we might see some, we might have more success, and that's very hard to do in a large organization, and it will take time to have someone to be able to do that. So for the teachers that are having to take FMLA, that are calling or sending emails, I've gotten two since I've, this meeting has started, you know, we are there for you, we're not going to tell you it's not happening, we're going to try our best to accommodate you and your loved ones because you matter and you're very important to us. So I think that's an important message to send. Mr. Bridges, if you can, I would like to address, there's a couple things you're getting back to me on that we're, we're about a month into. Is it possible to get a quarterly report? You may produce it, and I just don't have it. Is it possible to get a quarterly report of where we are in litigation or mediation or, not just OCR, but where we are in certain cases? So I'm not bothering you with emails asking for that.
Yes, ma'am, we do a quarterly report. I'll make sure we get a copy of the most recent one to you and find out when the next one's coming out.
That way, I won't send you for a duplicate information if we have that accessible.
No problem. Always happy to talk to you.
The other thing is meetings, if a meeting is advertised virtual, I'm going to comply with the staff and the superintendent and the chair, whoever's made that decision. I didn't realize half of the board was attending in person. I'm more than, I'm more than, well, today I had a, I had a surgical procedure and I was running to get to a computer, but any other time, I'm more than happy to come in, but I'm not going to go, I'm not going to force my will on, you know, walking into a meeting when it's, when we're asked to meet virtually. And I know other people, it's just easier to be in the same room. I don't want community members or families at home to think that I choose not to be in person with my colleagues. I would rather do that when we can do it in a safe environment, and if it's advertised that way, I'm very eager to come in and sit, and even if it's in different rooms or spaced apart, that'll, that'll be fine. I want to end with some good news, we have lots of good news, and one of them is the Woodman Life Chapter 106 out of Winter Haven called me. I'm from Winter Haven, so Sarah Beth, I try to, you know, Lynn and Sarah Beth do a great job, but sometimes I just, you know, you know people in certain areas, and they were looking for a Title I school to give a donation to, and this is the time the community, we desperately need these. I was taking some cases of hand sanitizers to a high school, and if you call a school and say, do you need something, the answer is going to be yes. So Ms. Blackman was very excited that this just came up on Friday, and they've already been to the school and gave her a donation so she can do more snacks with the kids for the first week and give them an incentive. And, you know, even if you're a company or a community member and it's just something small and you don't think it'll make a difference, right now, it will make a huge difference and an impact to our right now it will make a huge difference and an impact to our schools. So I want to encourage our community to step up and step out. And a lot of people are doing it. These backpack drives, our teacher of the year was doing things. Um, the Mulberry Community with Danny Higgins has been doing drives. I just want to um, thank the community for that kind of support because I think it's, it matters more now than it has in the past because of the strain on our, and our, and our resources. So thank you, Madam Chair. That's the end of my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Okay, I just have a few things. Um, first of all, I want to also echo as my colleagues, welcome back to our staff, our students, our families. Um, I too want to say that uh, we have some amazing teachers, paraprofessionals, um, nutritionists in our cafeterias, our bus drivers, our maintenance staff, our district office. I mean, everybody is working so diligently to try to reopen our schools as we started yesterday. And um, I've had a lot of positive comments come my way, certainly. Um, particularly those of parents whose children are going um, into brick and mortar schools this week. So um, it's very exciting that a lot of folks um, have chosen to go into, back into our schools. And I understand those that are doing e-learning, but I think either way, each family has to create that journey for themselves and how they're the most comfortable. So I'm hoping the COVID numbers are going down. Um, as I looked at the last report on Sunday, Polk County was down um, around 6%. So they are continuing, the numbers are continuing to go down um, just like any type of um, thing that we might have in the community. So those are really um, very promising numbers. Um, I'm hoping that as I'm hearing from the medical professionals and community that the vi- the um, testing for a vaccine for the virus is in its third phase. Um, and we're hopefully going to be seeing something coming out in the next month to six weeks. So that may help a lot of folks um, who are struggling with some of those decisions as well, be they families and parents to go back to their employers and/or our staff. So let's continue to hope and pray and everybody stay safe, certainly wearing your mask, social distancing and so forth. Additionally, I would like to announce that uh, we did have a work session today regarding the superintendent search, uh, which I thought was wonderful. Um, we had our Florida uh, School Boards Association there with Andrea Messina, Dr. Vogel and Mr. Reichert um, leading the way. And so I think the board um, did a great job in trying to outline how we're going to move forward with some of the uh, Community Advisory Board, which is going to be called a screening committee. And that group is going to be comprised from each board member, appointing three to five individuals in their community that they feel would do well to serve on that committee. And that committee will receive all of the, all of the applications for superintendent. And then they will actually go through, uh, depending on how um, the rubric is set up and then bring to us, we, the board hasn't decided exactly how many, but let's say five to six or seven finalists uh, for the board to then schedule interviews um, and move forward with that. So I thought we had an extremely productive meeting today. And as such, we have scheduled our next meeting, a work session uh, to be publicly noticed for Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And because they are all in different places, um, we've gone ahead and scheduled that um, with a Zoom meeting. So that will be coming forward once again on September the 3rd at 1:00 PM. And you're welcome to tune in and join us. And Mr. Bridges, you will make the appropriate public notice. Okay, thank you very much there. And lastly, I just want to say um, thank you to the Polk County community uh, for your vote of confidence in me. Um, I'm truly humbled, thankful and blessed for your continued support um, as we work to do the best we can to provide a rigorous and relevant education for all of our students. And that concludes my report. The next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items that are not on the agenda today. Mrs. Warbington, is there anyone that has submitted comments regarding items that were not on the agenda today?
Yes, ma'am. We have comments this evening. Our first comment comes from Joanne Kahoon. "Good day. As the PEA and PCPS work to develop MOUs and struggle to categorize staff as 100% remote or 100% on campus, I would like to add a request proposal for your consideration. The two employee options, e-learning or on-campus, may be appropriate for a large number of Polk County Public Schools personnel. I can only speak for, for myself and the itinerant occupational and physical therapist that I have interacted with. However, we would like to propose an additional hybrid option for OTPT itinerant employees and potentially others. Some of our work evaluations, direct student interventions, in-class interventions would ideally be completed on campus. However, many other components of our workday would ideally be completed virtually at home. These would include participating in virtual IEP or other meetings, working virtually with students that are e-learning and completing paperwork documentation. Theoretically, each therapist will already have students both on-campus and e-learning as we are categorized assigned by school area of the county. This type of hybrid or on-campus-as-needed model would be consistent with CDC guidelines of encouraging behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID-19 such as policies that allow for flexible work locations. Minimizing unnecessary on-campus time would limit our exposure risk in that of the many schools and classes, teachers and students we visit. Some of our therapists serve students at over 20 different schools. In one day, we may visit multiple classrooms and multiple schools. Our potential for exposure to disease and becoming vectors of disease is high. Minimizing our time on-campus would help mitigate this risk. Being on-campus just for the sake of being on-campus is counterintuitive and is an easily modified risk by allowing for hybrid campus home option. For those of us that fall into the higher-risk category in regard to our own health, it provides a reasonable accommodation as outlined in the ADA documentation for employees completing essential functions that would benefit from a flexible work location schedule. For those of us that have high-risk family members, it would provide an option to limit potential exposure while completing our jobs effectively and safely. As professionals, I believe that we are fully capable of managing a hybrid schedule. The all-or-none, on-campus 100% of the time or e-learning 100% of the time choices do not, in my opinion, provide the most consistent or best options for itinerant OTs and PTs to provide accessible, appropriate and high-quality care and interventions for our students while maintaining the most effective methods." Our next comment comes from Victoria Whitcomb. "To whom it may concern, I am sending this email to voice my concerns with mask-wearing in school. I cannot express more that this is, that this should be a parent's choice to send their child to school with a mask or not. I am all about uniform policy, but when it comes to this, I deeply feel it is wrong. I do not understand how all of a sudden it is an issue, but yet the, the flu runs through schools every single year and other upper respiratory infections. Wearing a mask is a major concern for me for many factors such as safety and causing other health problems in the long run. I am asking, requesting that this is not put into place as a mandatory policy." Our next comment is from Betsy Biker, Biker Godwin from Winter Haven. "As School Board Resolution 2019-2020-12 addresses the temporarily suspension of school board policies during certain emergencies impacting the health, safety and well-being of students, employees, volunteers and the community, I believe it is appropriate to state at this time, Polk County Public Schools has not seriously considered the opportunities this resolution offers in a positive way to address the lives, safety and well-being of students, employees, volunteers and the community as currently related to the pandemic COVID-19. Considering returning to a brick-and-mortar school option is an extreme risk to the lives, safety and well-being of the very students, employees, volunteers and the community, the resolution is meant to protect. A positive outcome would be use the resolution to place the well-being, safety and lives of students, employees, volunteers and the community as top priority. We have many brilliant minds and talented, creative people who certainly could make this happen. What exactly are the actual numbers of responses by students, parents regarding the three options of intent to return to school? Publish the numbers daily. The data is there and readily available. It is public record. Or is there concern about the low number of responses Polk County Public Schools has received? After receiving another call this past week and having no students in school, simply a 28-year veteran teacher and counselor, I am curious if there was information regarding intent for return of students and choice of options to be selected sent via US mail or simply the use of technology not accessible to all. No US mail was sent to the homes for the explanation of the three options and a non-online way of choosing an option, it is unfortunate. I have found the US mail to be the best way to communicate with all students, staff in all socioeconomic classes. Provide equal access to all ideas. Flyers, signs in churches, convenience stores on gas pumps, Walmart, Publix, utility departments, courthouse, government building and agencies, daycare centers, banks, physicians' offices, public announcements on the news channels and radio broadcasts, posting yard signs around the county, parking buses around the county with sign notifications, notification on citrus connection buses, billboards. Certainly the community would work together to accomplish this for our children. It is fair to simply default a student to brick-and-mortar due to lack of access to information. How about sign waivers on street corners, walking neighborhoods and leaving flyers? Just some thoughts from ideas from 28 years working in Title I schools and mandated parent contact." Our next comment comes from Lorraine D. Utter. "The basic concern, I want to express my distress with what was allowed at the last meeting. One public speaker was allowed to denigrate board members. Another speaker was allowed to speak after board comments without a time limit. This should not be happening." Uh, code of conduct comments. "I was encouraged with the discussion in regard to face masks. Thank you for extending the requirement to PK through 12. As Ms. Fortney stated, if they go do Disney and wear masks at age two, our students can wear masks. I didn't hear that we have included the type of mask that will be required. Why aren't we specifying this?" Budget comments. "Why are we using CARES Act funds to boost our fund balance? Why are we not using it for those items needed to protect our students and staff? Isn't that what the CARES Act funds are for? When do you plan on purchasing needed items for the classrooms? Teachers are purchasing their own dividers for classrooms as they are not confident that it will be supplied by the district. I know at least one teacher who has purchased a personal pod at a cost of $89.99 so she can be comfortable with face-to-face instruction. I heard this morning that teachers will need to purchase their own hand sanitizer as it is not available from the central purchasing we keep hearing about. We can use our lead money for this purchase. Is, is this a mandate? Keep in mind, these funds are never released before September 30th. I am concerned about our first-year teachers that won't have the resources to purchase prior to receipt of the funds. I ask you, if you aren't able to purchase what is needed for our classrooms, why are we rushing opening our schools face-to-face?" The return to ser- school survey. "I am concerned about the random daily temperature checks. How are you going to determine what 20% of the pop- what is 20% of the population? Staff will need to attest to not having symptoms daily. How will this be done? I think I heard that administrators will be picking who is randomly screened. Have you been in a school in the morning? You have so many parents wanting to speak to admin or teachers. Plus, they also help with morning duties. When are they doing the temperatures? It was also discussed that breakfast will be in the classroom or another location on campus. There were also comments that possibly lunch would need to be adjusted. We need to think about students' contact minutes for our teachers. I know my time is probably up. I have so many more questions that you haven't answered or considered." Our next comment comes from Mrs. Jaima from Mueller Row. Sorry. "Good day. I am writing you in order to state that I feel the Polk County schools should begin with e-learning for all. When the positivity rate is 5% or less, it would be safer to open the brick-and-mortar school-type learning environment. At this time, the safety of these employees is at risk and that is unacceptable. One life is too many. Recent surges in cases in children in Florida are alarming. There is a 34% increase in these cases. There was an outbreak of COVID-19 cases after one of the graduation ceremonies at one of the high schools. Volunteers taking over a certified teacher's position to teach Florida State standards is illegal and state tests will be given this spring 2021. And this will invalidate every last one of them. The e-learning from March through June was good and we can improve, especially if our district provides more training and excellent online programs for teachers to use. Here is a list of more reasons not to exclude those above to support opening at first with e-learning only while the rate is above 5%." Number one, asymptomatic cases will not be detectable with this deadly and highly contagious disease. Therefore, the, the CDC and health experts around the globe have recommended face masks and distancing as two major guidelines, especially in closed spaces and especially if a group of people, no matter what age, will be in a closed space for more than an hour in order to slow the spread. Dr. Jackson's recommendations were clearly not placed into the Polk County School Board frequently asked questions. FAQs on website is all the public and the employees have to go by at this time and no plan is listed at all. Students will be packed on buses to per seat and not one per seat as she recommended. No students will be social distancing classrooms since there is simply not enough space and there is no PPE supplied such as plastic barriers or shield. Three, no temperature checks are in place for anyone except bus drivers in attendance. Four, no one is going to be tested that enters a school building. No one is having to produce a negative COVID-19 test. Five, no social distancing on school buses or school grounds per FAQs on website, only that it would be done when and if feasible. Six, no plans for a sickroom to have children wait, wait in for parent pickup and that is they have a working number in order to contact. Seven, no clear social distance guidelines set for classrooms. Eight, who will be in class with students while they eat with no mask? Nine, the honor system. For children to be sent to school? Really? Temp checks should be mandatory in this situation. The positive rate for cases in Polk County is higher than 5% at this time. Why is every other business social distancing but not our classrooms? Yet teachers are just..." Our next comment comes from Jenny Vargas. "Mask. Will elementary students get mask breaks? Do they have to wear a mask during outdoor PE? If the kids are at their desk six feet from their classmate, why do they have to still wear a mask? The mandate states wear a mask if you cannot social distance. If they are already socially distant in the class, can they get a break from the mask? If the do- children do have to wear a mask for PE outdoors, what form can we obtain if our children suffer from dermatitis and asthma? Jenny Vargas." Our next comment is from Kelly Cat- Catrimbone. "To whom it may concern, thank you for your commitment to safety and our students during this time. Please continue putting students first by delaying the opening of brick-and-mortar schools. One life lost is too many. Please consider a delay until our COVID positivity rate is below 5% as recommended by the WHO, CDC for reopening. Polk County positivity rates are still too high to safely return students and staff. We can be- begin virtually and use science and data to drive our reopening of brick-and-mortar schools. Virtual instruction will meet our students' needs and allow them to learn in a safe environment. Please put students and staff first. Please open schools virtually to begin the year. Thank you." Our next comment comes from Wesley Spickard. "Hi, can you please help me understand something from the husband of a Polk County teacher? Polk County is making decisions based on influences that are not looking out for our county's children and already grossly underpaid teachers. Now we are asking underpaid teachers to risk their lives, something they did not sign up for when deciding to embark in this career. So they can act as a babysitting service for the rest of the community." so they can act as a babysitting service for the rest of the community, most of which have the actual option to work from home. Although my wife doesn't make much money working as a teacher, we rely on that paycheck month to month, and her heart will not let her abandon these kids to enter into a new career. Polk County really needs to reevaluate the reopening plan because the day a student or teacher dies from COVID, after they got infected from another individual at the school, will have a slowdown effect that will be immeasurable. We are talking about people's lives here, and the mental anguish you are all putting on the teachers right now is not fair, let alone the day they actually have to walk onto that campus knowing that if they don't, their kids can't eat that week. My contact info is below if anyone would like to give me a call to discuss. Wesley Spickard. This comment. On that comment. Next comment is from Christina Finney. As a parent of a school-aged child, I find it hypocritical and despicable that the school board cannot meet in person for meetings but still expect teachers, staff, and children to be present in person at schools. Our next comment is from Marcus Mags. Billy, thank you so much for everything you've done. You're the reason I stayed in this county as long as I have and the reason I decided to pay more attention to the politics surrounding education. I have honestly become more aware and more vocal due to your unceasing vigilance. I know that I am no longer satisfied with the status quo, and I owe a lot of my transformation to following your lead. I, along with every teacher I know, owe you more than we can ever repay. While it is extremely disheartening to see you go, I eagerly await seeing your platform continue to spread and look forward to your next venture. Marcus Mags. I have another comment from Deborah Hecht. Polk County Public Schools needs to reconsider their decision to offer face-to-face learning due to the fact that the positivity rate currently among those under the age of eighteen is sixteen-point-five percent in Polk County. Today, we started classes face-to-face, and students were definitely not able to social distance at my school. Face masks were worn incorrectly by many students and staff. It is not a safe situation. Due to the fact that the governor's order was ruled unconstitutional, our local school board now has the authority to listen to science without the threat from the governor. Therefore, I urge our local school, I urge our leaders in Polk County to reconsider the decision that was forced upon our students and staff. I also urge our Polk County School Board leaders to be transparent when COVID-nineteen cases are discovered at each school site. Teachers who have dedicated their lives to schools and students certainly have the right to know the truth. Thank you. Next comment comes from Danielle Sohaver. Good afternoon. I am reaching out to you because I want the voices of the schools, teachers, and parents during, doing e-school with our kids are having a horrible day. I want you to get to know me. My name is Danielle Sohaver. My children, Jackson, first grade, Valley View, and Brayden, kindergarten at Rochelle, are doing e-school this nine weeks. We have iPad devices that were provided by the district. I also have a laptop at home. Here is how day one has gone. I could not access any of my kids' Schoology apps or links provided by the teachers. I had to message both teachers, call the hotline, to be hung up on multiple times, call their schools, drive to the schools, install, reinstall apps that were supposedly already on their iPads, drive home to start the day, and have yet again apps, links not work. And when I call the school's tech hotline yet again, there are known issues, and to be told that this is what I signed up for is not true. My main expectations were to have my kids able to at least log on to Schoology and be able to attend school on Zoom with their teachers, and I be available to help if needed, to have everything else fall into place as time passes, but hopefully not too long. I have had two amazing teachers, Haunts at Rochelle and Grady at Valley View, call me, email, message on the dojo, and remind to try and help me all these issues while handling regular class and while messaging their tech person as well. Please speak for us, and let it be known, we need help and updated servers, networking structures to make school less frustrating for all our students and faculty. I have seen and spoke with numerous parents that are also running into the same issues, so I know this is not just a single incident happening. I hope to hear or see something soon. Our next comment comes from Betty, Betty Jean. Dear School Board members, I am a second-grade teacher. I've been teaching for over twelve years. I love my job, administration, colleagues, and most importantly, our students. The school district and board has not given enough support to my administration. He does not have enough resources to accommodate all the needs our campus teachers and students require. My principal is doing his best. However, he is short-staffed. Two people, two people quit last week on Thursday and Friday, and our school is underfunded. Here is the reality. One, lunch. We only have about twelve minutes. There are two pairs or teachers that go around to give us a twelve-minute lunch break. Some teachers didn't get a lunch break today because a staff member was not here today. Two, when we have art or music, we have to leave our teacher computer so the para who is covering for our e-learning art and music teachers can show the lesson. That is my planning time, and I need to have a computer. That is two times in six days. Also, the art para didn't show up for at least one teacher. Three, we are supposed to use Schoology to, at least once a week per the district. However, we have no computer lab time. We have only a couple of computers in our classroom. We went from eight iPads last year to none. If we have a computer in our classroom, it is a very old desktop or laptop. Four, parents have not been allowed in the office probably since the spring when the office staff returned to work. All last week, parents have been outside in the heat, and the secretaries go outside to them and bring what they need in the Florida heat. How is that showing compassion to our families? We should show them kindness and compassion. Five, equipment. Teachers need computer equipment. Cables for document cameras, speakers to play videos and lessons, adapters for USB ports. I only have one USB port. Projectors need to be fixed. My smart has had a help ticket since last year, and it still hasn't been fixed. I love our tech guy, but it has always been about money or the district has to fix it. When are they going to fix the technology in my classroom so I may use it? Six, buses. Some don't show up until after four P.M. Teachers should be able to leave at their contract time, three-thirty. This has been a problem for a long time, and still nothing has been done about it. My principal was in contact with transportation last year, and still nothing was done. You would think less kids would make it quicker. Seven, the school day, seven forty-five to three-thirty. The only break we get is our fifty minutes for planning and twelve minutes for lunch. Four hundred and ten minutes is currently how long most teachers have students, not including the extra twenty-five for buses. We have a dedicated teacher who stays after three fifty-five with any additional late bus drivers. Like I said, my administration is doing the best he can. I love my school and staff, but we need help. Our next comment is from Lisa Willman. There are so many issues at hand right now in the district. I am choosing to address you based on the two most pressing at the moment: blended classes, e-learning, and school sanitation. I urge the members of the school board and the superintendent to put expectations in place for their bargaining committee to work in good faith with PEA to agree upon a MOU for our working conditions. I have watched each and every bargaining meeting, and it is equally frustrating as a teacher and as a parent. It appears that the district bargaining team, led by our head of HR, has no desire to reach an agreement, nor are they prepared when coming to the table. I find that very disrespectful as a parent and as a teacher. Parents are being expected to serve as coach for their child during e-learning. Without having clear parameters for the teachers, this makes it increasingly difficult to know what is expected of both sides. My son has chosen e-learning to begin his senior year. Without a clearly outlined expectation of this experience, he has had a very frustrating start. Some of his classes have Zoom meetings, some don't. All of his classes are of the blended model. This is extremely difficult for his teachers as they are being pulled in both directions. What are you expecting of his teachers is too much. I urge you to put yourself in their shoes for ninety minutes. Do you think you could effectively teach thirty kids sitting in front of you face-to-face while also dealing with fifteen or more students in e-learning who are trying to access a Zoom meeting? I also urge you to re-watch your Q&amp;A videos that you released to Facebook this summer. The e-learning that we signed up for was not the same e-learning that you outlined in those videos. In addition, I am concerned about the blended learning model as a teacher. When teachers made the preference of face-to-face learning, that choice was based on the information given at the time. None of the information that we were given stated that we would be required to teach online and face-to-face simultaneously. It was with good faith that we trusted the Polk County Public Schools to have a dedicated e-learning program and a dedicated face-to-face program. If we were unable to offer all options with fidelity, we should not have given three separate options. The MOU also needs to address the sanitation of the schools. It should not be at the hands of the teacher to clean their rooms. That is just one more added responsibility that we do not have time to take on. The head of HR clearly stated in the last bargaining session that it was disrespectful of the PEA team to expect her to attend meetings after the scheduled time. She stated that a healthy work-life balance was important. Does that healthy work-life balance only apply to district office personnel? I know that as a teacher, I have already worked well over forty hours past my duty day just to meet the bare requirement that is being asked of me. Our next comment comes from Darren Winhold. Special needs children, ESE, have been left behind in this pandemic like no other segment of the student population. Study after study, news report after news report, testimonial after testimonial, all categorically conclude that virtual distance learning does not suit the needs of the overwhelming overwhelming majority of ESE students. Not only do they require one-on-one face-to-face instructions, many cannot attend to screens like tablets or computers. Many cannot listen on a phone. Many do not speak or have the intellect to understand remote learning. They require the much-needed therapies like PTOT and speech. Up until this virus closed real school, the success of ESE children was just as important general education students. All that changed on March thirteenth. It's time to make sure that ESE special needs students are again considered into this equation. It's unacceptable to leave them behind any longer. Darren Winhold. Our next comment is from Ms. Sheila Davis. School lunch outside. I have addressed this issue in numerous emails, including numerous phone conversations with Bartow Middle School Principal and Mr. Hill. My grandson has stomach problems, and the heat set his vomiting off. I even asked if there were exceptions being made. I was told no, unless there was a doctor's excuse. I am now having to check my grandson out for lunch to eat in my car and check him back in so he does not miss any class time. I am now having to take him to his Niemours Children's Specialist for a doctor's note. Why should a parent or guardian have to go through this? Mrs. Davis. Our next comment comes from Patricia Warren. Two weeks ago, I tried to reach the ESE facilitator at my daughter's school. My reason for this would be to gather information to help facilitate the best decision for my daughter's education, whether that be e-learning or hospital homebound. She informed me that she would not be in the office until Monday because that is the date they are scheduled to report. She said she would be in meetings that day and Tuesday and would hope to have information for me on Wednesday. Friday afternoon around four, I sent a follow-up email and logged into Schoology. At that time, I discovered the roster for my daughter's class would be fourteen students, which in my opinion, fourteen students in a class means it is impossible to have a meaningful education for significantly delayed students. I received a call from the ESE facilitator that evening, and she said they are trying to get everything worked out. After my call with her, the person assigned to be my daughter's teacher called and said she was no longer her teacher. Would you believe this teacher was given an assignment of teaching e-learning and face-to-face ESE students? On Monday morning, the first day of school, I began trying to reach the school. Finally, just before ten A.M., I was informed there was no teacher for my daughter's class, and they sent over five worksheet pages. After speaking with several people, I had been informed there is a significant ESE staff shortage. So now I am unsure how long it will take to find a teacher for her class, but what I do know is that she does not respond well to doing worksheets. Also, five worksheets per day is not an acceptable education without instruction time. Then, we have my oldest daughter. Every one of her teachers is teaching both e-learning students and face-to-face students. My daughter says that the teachers are not engaged with the e-learning students, and because the teachers are unable to work with in-person students and watch their laptops, it is a challenge for the e-learning students to ask questions because the instructor can't see their raised hands. In addition to that, my daughter was told today to not bother coming to one of her classes, and a link for her class was not sent. There are only two e-learning students in that class. I sympathize with these teachers. They are being tasked with the impossible. My youngest child is happy with her e-learning experience, but her teacher only has e-learners. We chose e-learning for our family at the recommendation of my daughter's cardiologist and pediatrician. They said that we need to keep all three of our girls home because it could lead to my daughter becoming very sick, and she may not survive this virus. You see, the common cold and flu often develop into pneumonia, and she is frequently hospitalized. Each night at dinner, we share how our day has gone. As we went around to each child, the tears started flowing down. Our next comment is from Jennifer Lawson. E-campus is not working. The county is setting us up for failure. I was not trained in Zoom or Schoology. Yes, Schoology has modules for teachers to follow, but when I taught, when when I taught fifth grade, I was trained in the technology that was used in class. Second-grade teachers have not had any training. Yes, we made a choice to teach e-learners, but the amount of students we have is more than double. I have thirty-one students in one class and thirty in another. That's sixty-one total students. I was not taught how to manage students on Zoom and meet the needs of all my students. It's impossible for me to teach my sixty-one students and keep track of them while doing Zoom lessons. Monday during pre-planning, we had the ICP read to e-teachers stating that we cannot fail these children and can't be away from them for more than fifteen minutes. How can we do groups with that many students? We were also told that we had to have packets made with schedules and other papers in it before we left that evening to distribute on Tuesday. We didn't get a schedule until three-thirty. I finished at eight. I passed out packets in an unorganized fashion through the car rider line in the burning heat, then through a thunderstorm that afternoon that created tornadoes just an hour north of us. Could I teach myself how to use Zoom or Schoology Monday or Tuesday? No. How about Wednesday? Nope. We had Zoom meetings all day from administration. That left Thursday or Friday to learn how to be prepared for e-learning. During that time, we had to get sixty-two parents connected to some form of communication from the emails they sent us. We use ClassDojo to communicate, but we still had to make sure they were connected to get that information. We were required to conduct Zoom orientation for two hours of Thursday and Friday. Friday at three fifty-three, we were notified to get all the consumable books for our students, and it would be our problem to solve. I went to school Saturday for hours and loaded the two Go Math books, STEM Scopes, and reading books for all sixty-two e-learners in my truck. I currently have them in my possession. I don't have an answer to when I will pass them out because I am supposed to be on Zoom all day, just like face-to-face teachers. We were told we are not to have any interruptions. Since when does school not have disruptions? How is Zooming with second graders okay all day? It is not okay. I am hurting, exhausted, and a skeleton. I'm not healthy, and I cannot even plan my lessons or teach myself how to instruct online. This is not pretty or helpful. I'd rather be in school, but how can I move back with boxes in my truck? I am losing my part- I am losing my partner that teaches half the class. She is experienced in all this technology, but her help is not worth this. We are not prepared for any of this. Our next comment is from Bob Ball. I am 64 years old and a teacher at Auburndale High School. I turned in ADA last Monday with several concerns listed and specifically stated I needed to work from home. I have been forced to work face-to-face classes. I keep being told by risk management, we will make a decision soon. I am taking half-day sick leave after reading the ADA. Our next comment is from Larry Milhorn, President ASME Local 2227. I watched the school board work session today. The search for a new superintendent is something important to us all, but to ask our current superintendent to stay after she has committed herself to retiring is absurd to ask. First, I know she has strong feelings for our district and has done great things here, but she has earned the right to retire as she and her family have planned. I will be stepping down as ASME Local 2227's president in October, and I have had a few people ask me to stay longer. And though I love my local and members, it is the right time for me to go. So please let the superintendent and her family move on. We all owe her that. Our final comment this evening is from Sherri Ross. I watched the school board work session and was pleased to see that all board members agreed to move forward with the superintendent's search. The fact that months have passed and no movement was made made it seem like the students and staff of Polk County were being held up as a political ploy, especially since it was the number-one priority of a candidate for school board. It was nice to see the board finally move forward and respect Mrs. Byrd's desire to retire. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your remarks. I'd also like to express my distaste for the fact that the school board is planning virtual meetings into September, even as we have sent teachers and students back to face-to-face learning. We are two days into the school year, and we have already had Boone Middle and McHill both have positive cases, which have exposed staff and students to COVID. Please don't ask your employees what you aren't willing to do yourself. You are charged with keeping staff and students safe. Lead by example. Sherri Ross. And that completes our comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Warbington. I appreciate that. Okay. I think we have come to the end of our meeting this evening. I want to thank our school board members and our public who's been able to be with us this evening. And the next order of business, board members, is adjournment. There being no further business, the meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned. Thank you.